Good evening, citizens of Portsmouth and my colleagues on council. Welcome to the Portsmouth City Council meeting. I would ask at this time for everyone to stand for a moment of silence. And in addition to that, afterwards, we will do the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I would ask that my colleagues all note their presence electronically.
Six members of the city council present.
And before we begin the meeting, I will call that we had our minutes of a special meeting on May 8th, 2023, a called meeting on May 9th, 2023, and a regular meeting on May 9th, 2023. Do we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes?
Move adoption.
Second.
I would ask all my colleagues to vote electronically.
The minutes are adopted six zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk, would you please read the speaker rules for council?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, city council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. Our remarks shall be directed to the city council as a body rather than any particular member of city council staff or the audience, and should be limited to the matters that only Portsmouth City Council can influence. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, ma'am. And before we move into the public hearings, as mayor, last meeting, I made a statement regarding our law enforcement as it relates to the Sheriff's Department. And as I made that statement, some people felt that it was disrespectful to the Sheriff's Department employees. I want to be clear to say to everyone that I understand all of those employees that work with the Sheriff's Department and our Police Department are law enforcement employees. And in no way did I intend to disregard or disrespect the work that the men and women on both the Sheriff's Department and the Police Department participate in keeping our citizens and our city safe. I just wanted to convey that, and I hope that the apology is accepted to the sheriff and to his department and his members, and we will continue to do the work of the citizens of Portsmouth. Thank you. Now we have come to the item on our agenda, public hearings. Item 23-176, public hearing on use permit and rezoning applications. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the public hearing item?
Yes, sir. Carney Farm, resolution granting the request of Nicole Clay with Deep Creek Academy for a use permit to operate a childcare center on approximately 6.5 acres located at 4710 High Street West in the general residential zoning district. The future land use map of the Bill 1 Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property for institutional public use. Excuse me, instructional, institutional public use. The property is owned by Fred Riley and other trustees. Planning Commission recommends approval with conditions, and the actual resolution reads, "A resolution granting a use permit, UP 2302, to operate a childcare center at 4710 High Street West."
Thank you, ma'am. Is the applicant present today? Ma'am, if you would come forward and please state your name and address, and you will have 10 minutes.
Good evening, council members. My name is Marcia Goodman. My address is 3405 Winter Hawk Court, Chesapeake, Virginia. And we are here this evening to discuss or are opening a childcare facility within your boundaries of the city of Portsmouth. I have here with me Nicole Clay, who is our church administrator, and she can answer any logistical questions you may have after I give my little speech here. It would be located at 4710 High Street West, and we would use the existing building, which is already designed, to house a school. Deep Creek Baptist Church will be adding on or repairing the necessary areas around the building to add on to a new playground, working on the parking lot, and also having fenced in areas for the children. We will go through the licensing regulations for the Virginia Department of Education, and we will be religiously exempt. Our plan is that we open the first year to start the childcare with infant and toddlers only. These children will range in age from six weeks to 36 months. Space availability would only, at the beginning, be for 36 children because we want to start small and grow. In the second year, we plan to open a three-year-old classroom for those infants, for those toddlers who have turned three can move up into a three-year-old classroom, and a four-year-old classroom if necessary, if it's the demand of the community around us. The 23703 ZIP code has nine licensed childcare programs that exist, but only four offer infant and toddler care. We hope opening our academy to this community would offer a well-rounded early care and education experience with a faith-based foundation to more families in the 23703 and surrounding Portsmouth community. Our program will be headed by a board of directors, a director to oversee and travel between two locations, that would be Deep Creek Academy in Chesapeake and our Deep Creek Academy at West Portsmouth, an assistant director to manage the daily operations at the Portsmouth location, an infant and toddler specialist with state credentials in the area of care for infants and toddlers, and a minimum of two experienced teachers and assistants in each classroom, with more added to maintain proper ratios guided by the Virginia State Licensing. As the program grows, more staff will be added, providing care for more of our community's children and jobs that would not otherwise exist. We are so looking forward to supporting the community and are praying that the city and the community themselves will see the vision and value of moving this faith-based childcare and education facility forward. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, my name is Nicole Clay. I'm the church administrator for Deep Creek Baptist Church, reside at 149 Terwillinger Road in Chesapeake. I'm addressing the traffic flow. It was a question that was asked at the planning commission meeting. So I have a map that you don't have in the slides, but we brought enough copies for everyone if you'd like. So at the, at the planning commission meeting, like I said, there were some concerns, I think.
Excuse me, ma'am. If you would give the copies of the traffic flow to our sergeant-at-arms, and he can distribute them to everybody up on the dais.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we're avoiding the use of Carney Farm Lane, which is a residential area that's adjacent to the church. So I'll wait till you have your map so you can see what I'm talking about. So you have two sheets. They're both the same thing, just different views. So drivers are going to enter directly in front of the church where the sign is. It's right off of High Street. And then we'll have feather flags or other signage to indicate that this is the entrance for the academy. Using other signs and barriers, we're going to direct drivers to the parking area, so as well as the exit path, which will be at the stoplight that goes back out to High Street. So that provides safety as they're turning back on to that main road. As the program expands with older children, we'll have a car line and drop-off. That's indicated in the yellowish-orange color. So that'll be for future use, but they also have their own path that doesn't cross with the infant-toddler program. So the programs' hours are small, and even as it grows, the volume of the traffic is going to be easily maintained. We expect that the families are going to drop off and pick up at various times, so they're staggered. They have a morning and an afternoon surge, but not all at once. So with the program at the Chesapeake location, we have roughly 180 children. We only use about eight parking spots, and the car rider line is only about eight to 10 cars maximum because of the staggering of the pickup and drop-off. So this is very manageable. Thank you.
Thank you, maams. Are there any questions from our colleagues on council? Councilman Hugel, sir, you have the floor.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So my question is to the city manager. In the package that we were given, the engineering department comments indicate that approval of a new playground construction will be required. How does that happen? There are no conditions on this that speak to that. So there's a note in here, but I'm not sure how they know that that's got to happen in order to build that playground.
I can address the playground if you like.
Okay.
Ma'am, go ahead.
Okay. So we have a construction crew that's currently using the property for storage of dirt and rocks, things like that. And as they leave, they're actually going to grade about 100-foot by 100-foot section for a playground. So all that we'll need to do is fence it in and add mulch. So it's already in place. If you're looking at your map, at the bottom, where there's a crosswalk indicated, that area that looks like sand, it's roughly in that area, and that's where the playground will be.
Yeah, so the engineering comments suggest that before you do that, somebody in the city's got to give you permission. It says approval of new playground construction will be required. How's that, do they have to submit a building permit to build a playground?
It's through permits and inspections.
Okay. Okay.
We can get that done.
Are there any additional questions from my colleagues on council? Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. You are not required to have signed up to speak on this public hearing matter. If you wish to speak on this public hearing item, if you would come forward, state your name and address, you will have five minutes. Seeing none, then this public hearing is closed. I would now move to call for a... Do we have, that's for another public hearing? That's not this public hearing. Thank you, sir. Do we have a motion and a second?
Move to approve.
Second.
Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, I would ask that my colleagues to vote electronically.
This item is approved six zero.
Thank you, ma'am. And Madam Clerk, would you please read our next public hearing item, UP-23-03, West Norfolk?
Yes, sir. Resolution granting the request of James Stevens with Port Row Crane Service for a use permit to operate a shipping container storage yard on approximately 1.4 combined acres located at 3301 Mariner Avenue, 3300 West Norfolk Road, 3324 West Norfolk Road, and 3303 Broadway Street in the light industrial zoning district. The future land use map of the Bill 1 Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property light industrial use. The property is owned by Roger and Glenna Woodington. Planning Commission recommends approval with conditions, and the actual resolution reads, "A resolution granting a use permit, UP 2303, to operate a shipping container storage yard at 3301 Mariner Avenue, 3300 West Norfolk Road, 3324 West Norfolk Road, and 3303 Broad Street..." Excuse me, Broadway Street.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
You're welcome.
Is the applicant present? Sir, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have 10 minutes.
Hello, my name is Dan Stevens, address 3301 Mariner Avenue, Portsmouth, Virginia, and here to hopefully get approval for a use permit for a shipping container yard on our property. The operation is quite simple. Our location is right between Virginia and National Gateway and Portsmouth Marine Terminal, so we're in a very good location to achieve these containers. Again, it's a very simple operation. The truck with the container will come in on Broadway, come onto the property. It takes about a total of five minutes to establish the paperwork and documents, then connect the container handling crane to the container, take it off of the truck. The truck pulls out and exits on Adam Street. Then we put the container into a stack. And that will continue throughout the day. Right now, we're looking at one shift from 7:00 to 3:30 until we see how the business will, if there's enough business right now, the shipping is, containers are way down in volumes. So we anticipate that the next three to six months will be very light traffic. We won't be having the containers that we could if, when the economy turns around a little bit and we start having a little bit more empty containers. So initially, we kind of missed the boat a little bit for the heavy container traffic, but we look forward to the future and look forward to the rest of this year to learn the operation and make it a well-oiled machine by the time the containers pick back up.
Does that conclude your comments, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Does any of my colleagues have any questions for Mr. Stevens? Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mr. Stevens. You mentioned the containers will be put in a stack, and those won't exceed four high?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Just want to make sure how tall that stack was.
Yes, yes, sir.
Councilman Hugel, you have the floor, sir.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Stevens, thanks for coming tonight. I know there was discussion at the planning commission meeting about traffic and the condition of the roadways. How many trucks do you anticipate traveling in and out of your facility when you get up and running a day? How many trucks a day?
Initially, maybe five to 10 trucks. Like I say, that volume is way down right now. When it's running full stream, there could be, in that eight-hour shift, maybe 20 to 30 trucks. And again, that's just speculation and guessing from knowing the flow of what the containers are coming out of Vig and coming out of PMT. Right now, as you know, PMT is under construction for the wind energy business, but we also have leads there to store wind energy containers while things are being done at PMT. So there's a lot in the works, nothing real firm yet. We didn't want to progress a lot until we knew we had the use permit. So I would say initially, it'll be very low. Hopefully, beginning of next year is when it'll turn around, and in that first shift, like I say, 20 to 30 trucks a day, probably.
Okay. So the city manager and I took a drive last Friday over around that area, and the roads are pretty rough. I'm looking at the engineering department comments in the package we were given. It says Broadway Street is narrow, not broad, along the property in the intersection with the West Norfolk Roads in poor condition. I'll agree with that. Recommend requiring paving with asphalt on the northwest corner of Broadway and West Norfolk to the extent needed to allow tractor-trailers to access the site without running off the road. So again, I guess I need to ask the city manager or the city engineer. So requiring paving by whom? Is this, we're going to pave it, or we're going to require Mr. Stevens to pave it? I mean, I don't think, there's no condition in here that requires Mr. Stevens to pave anything. And so if we're expecting him to pave something, we need to add that condition in here and find out if he's agreeing to do that.
So it would be part of the site plan process, and it would be on the developer to do that? Similar to how when the Kroger came in, they had to do several turn lanes to access their property. Off-site improvements are responsibility to the developer if needed with their development.
Okay, well, it's not crystal clear from the comments in this package that a site plan is even required. It says if they're going to add pavement, then a site plan is required. So we seem to be in a catch-22. If we don't need pavement, no site plan required, and then we're going to ask him to pave, and that's going to require a site plan? I'm not, I'm still unclear how that's going to work.
If the property is not currently developed for the use, that's going to trigger a site plan when he goes in to develop that property.
Okay.
So what is my next step?
I think what I just heard, Mr. Stevens, is they're, the city engineer's going to ask you for a site plan, and if he follows up on his comment, you're going to get asked to pave in the vicinity as part of that site plan.
The entire streets or just on my property?
So that's a great question, and I guess we're going to solve that during site planning?
So during the site plan process, there'll be a determination of what the extent of what he'll have to do off-site is. But he'll also have to address stormwater management and other issues on his properties.
So do I provide the site plan or... Okay. So that's my next step.
Mr. Stevens, it probably would be appropriate at this point, so we're not talking back and forth, to go to the appropriate department after what happens in this process, and then they will direct you clearly on what your next step should be.
Yes, sir.
Okay? Thank you. Are there any other questions from our colleagues?
This is for staff.
Dr. Whitaker, you have a question for staff?
Right. The requirement that he, that Mr. Stevens stacks it at four, is that...
No, it should be three.
Okay, I thought he said four. It's three? He said four.
Well, the conditions under his use permit is for three.
So it's three?
That's correct.
So my question, does the code require three or what? How is that determined? And the reason I'm asking is because this is another property that's coming for storage. There was one, I believe, across the street from Joseph V. Parker Rec Center that came before us, and it was a two-stack requirement. And so I'm trying to, how is it decided whether it's three or two?
I'll have zoning come up because it's as part of the condition for or recommendations, it was stated three, maximum of three high. So I guess when they went before the committee, but I will allow someone from planning or zoning to come up. Because when they went before the committee, that's what they agreed on, and that's what's documented. But I'll again yield to them to provide an explanation.
Can somebody clarify that with the code as far as what the code allows?
The code does say four.
Four, yes.
But in this project, narrative, he said three. As a result, the condition says three.
Yes.
So...
It's here in your package.
So the previous approval where it was conditioned that that vendor could only stack it two units high, how was that determined?
I'm not sure of the previous. Yeah, I don't know anything about previous.
Let me, first of all, we don't have necessarily that information. Perhaps we need to get the information before we can determine how that was coming to the conclusion.
Do you have the resolution?
No, it's not the resolution. I'm just trying to determine how do you decide whether it's two or three or four?
We can certainly bring that information.
Yeah, that can come up.
Right, but that's in what was presented to planning, and that's what is in the document.
Right, right. So I'm fine.
Therefore, Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Can we get a follow-up on that at the next meeting?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Thank you, Mayor. My question is to Mr. Stevens. Were you aware that a site plan was going to be required and with potentially having to pave that road before you came here tonight?
No, sir. I'd seen the verbiage of site plan in some of the documents I got from planning and zoning, but when I came the first time, that was never discussed, and I didn't think that that was a situation that I'd be faced with tonight. I'm not saying, I mean, that's a pretty big bump in the road, but if that's what we need to do, then of course I'll talk with my team, and we'll make a decision from there. But I think that's a pretty big undertaking. I know nothing about paving streets and roads.
My apology for you being hit with that on the night where your items to be deliberated, that should have been addressed prior to you having to come here tonight, so.
Once again, thank you, Mr. Stevens. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Appreciate everything.
Moving right along, we're in need of a motion and a second. Wait, excuse me, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I got caught up in the discussion. This is a public hearing. Anyone who wishes to come and speak on this matter, you can come forward. You're not required to have signed up. If you want to speak on this particular public hearing item, come forward, state your name and address, and you will have five minutes. Thank you.
Joanne Clark, Churchland Civic League. This is a classic reason of why we need levels of service established throughout the city on roads particularly. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else who would like to come and speak on this public hearing matter? Seeing none, then this public hearing is closed. We are in need of a motion and a second.
Move for approval.
Is there any additional discussion on this public hearing item? Seeing none, I would ask that my colleagues, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted six zero.
Thank you, ma'am. We have now come to item CZ-23-02, and there is a, the applicant is requesting a deferral on this particular public hearing item. And so as a result, we will need a motion and a second to defer this item. And upon deferral being granted, we will move forward, and there will be no speakers required on this item once it is deferred.
Is there a date?
Yes, we need to get a date.
Of deferral?
I do not have a listed date, sir, at this time. However, the applicant, go ahead, ma'am.
Council members, in the email that was sent, they are saying Tuesday, June 13th would be better for them, or the 27th, either one of those dates. And just for clarification on the information the mayor provided, Z2302 and UP2304...
That's correct.
...are joint items. So if you defer Z2302, you'll need to also defer UP2304.
Right. And Madam Clerk, for clarification, can we defer them together or separately?
You can, yes, sir.
Okay, yes, ma'am. So then the motion for deferral would be for item Z23-02 and item UP... So then, the motion for deferral would be for item Z-23-02 and item UP-2304.
Move to defer item C-23-02 and UP-23-04. Second.
Need a date.
To the 13th of June.
Second.
Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, would you please vote electronically?
This item is deferred to June 13th by a vote of six-zero.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next item, item E, UP-23-05, Uptown. Madam Clerk, would you please read the public hearing resolution?
Yes, sir. Resolution granting the request of Alvin Keels of D&amp;K Builders to amend the existing UP-2109 use permit for a 52-unit townhouse development on approximately 4.1 acres of land located at 1107 and 1121 High Street, in the neighborhood mixed-use zoning district with the proposed density of 12.65 dwelling units per acre. The future land use map of Phil One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this area as a mixed-use corridor. The properties are owned by the Portsmouth Economic Development Authority. Planning Commission recommends approval with conditions, and the actual resolution reads, "A resolution granting a use permit, UP-2105-23..." Oh, sorry. UP-2305 to D&amp;K Builders to construct a townhouse development, having not more than 52 units at 1107 and 1021 High Street.
Thank you, ma'am. Is the applicant present? Sir, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have 10 minutes.
Good evening. Alvin Keels, 4061 Estates Lane, Portsmouth, Virginia.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. I'm back. So this is an item that was presented a couple of years ago. It was approved by City Council. I submitted my site plan this year, earlier this year, for the city to review. And in that process, my engineers from Hager Yore discovered that it was gonna be impossible to set the BNP where it was originally designed. And so, and then also, when they did their actual calculations during the design process, they realized that the BNP had to be larger. And so when the BNP became larger, it forced my architects to, you know, I guess shrink the townhouses. They were actually longer, you know, when I was here before you guys a couple of years ago. And as a result, the outdoor terrace area, I actually moved from the third floor to the rooftop. And so the design is the same, materials are the same. I think it's a minor change, but, you know, I'll leave that to you guys to ultimately decide. And as far as the BNP goes, you know, the state requires, you know, there's a lot of state law in place for BNP, and, you know, we stay within the state regulations, and it forced us to have to move. And I think that part of my conditions actually clearly stated that if the state requirements require, you know, a change in the BNP, that, you know, it should go through. But, you know, I'm back, you know, there's no need to really argue, you know, but it's the same, pretty much, project that I presented a couple of years ago. So if you guys have any questions, I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Keels.
Thank you.
Are there any questions from our colleagues on council? Councilman Hugo, sir?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So when the Planning Commission approved and sent it to us on the 4th of April, there was a condition that addressed digital video equipment and cameras as a condition, and that, in the package I have, that's now been lined out, and the recommended condition rescinded as of April the 5th, so the day after the Planning Commission. So... Did you ask for that condition to be removed, or it's gone? It's, it was in the Planning Commission approval, and now it's gone?
I believe my engineers had a conversation with planning. Actually, it was, the original approval didn't require it. I think what we agreed on is that we would install ring doorbells on all of the units. So I'm guessing that was the reason it was struck out, but I wasn't a party to the conversations that they had with the Planning Department.
So the reason I ask is because...
Councilman Hugo. Thank you. There's some constitutional issues relating to requiring those types of video recordings on residential properties in the manner initially addressed, and because of that discussion, they removed the condition on this particular property.
Okay, well, the reason I'm asking is because the zoning ordinance changes that we're gonna vote on here shortly and discuss just a little while ago at the work session include a change, I believe, to require security cameras to be installed. Isn't that true?
That's true, but that's in a different part, very specific part, that's already been approved as constitutional. So those issues are not at issue. The manner in which they described in this particular property would not have been constitutional.
Got it, thank you.
Any other questions for my colleagues? Thank you, Mr. Keels. Once again, this is a public hearing. You're not required to have signed up to come and speak on this particular public hearing item. If you do, state your name, come forward to speak, state your name and address, and you will have five minutes.
Ron Sauer, one thing, Maryfield's area. And one thing you said, I believe he said...
Excuse me, sir, did you state your, did you say your name?
Yes, Ron Sauer.
Okay, Ron, good to see you. Thanks for coming.
Just a quick question that nobody seems to have addressed, and was not stated. And if I heard right, he said that the recreation area and park, almost called parks, but anyway, they moved it to the roof? Is that correct? From the third floor or something, to the roof?
I'm...
And if they moved it to the roof, have they strengthened the roof to cover the excess load? That's all I'm saying.
Okay, okay, Mr. Sauer, thank you.
That's a question.
Okay, and I'll ask, I'll ask the applicant to come forward to clarify that, sir. Thank you.
Yes, the roof will have to meet all regulations and guidelines and codes to support, you know, I'm sure to have a maximal occupancy up, you know, on the roof, and, you know, just like any other deck. But yes, we'll adhere to all codes and regulations to support, you know, people being on the deck.
Yes. Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. If you wish to come and speak on this particular item, come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes. Seeing none, this public hearing is now closed. We do have a need for a motion and a second.
Second.
Is there any additional discussion? I would ask that my colleagues vote electronically.
This item is adopted six-zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We're now moving to an unfinished business item. Item 23-124, Code Amendment, item A, CA-22-01. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering at this time?
Yes, sir. Ornis granting the City of Portsmouth a request to amend and reordain Chapter 40.2 of the Code of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia, by making targeted modifications related to downtown sub-districts, uses and use-specific requirements, aerial bulk density building and setback regulations, off-street and bicycle parking, driveways, resilient building features and landscaping, screening, lighting, and signage regulations, together with certain technical amendments to comply with the Virginia Code and improve administrative efficiency. This item was deferred from your April 11th, 2023 City Council meeting, and the ordinance you would be adopting reads, "An ordinance to amend and reordain Chapter 40.2 of the Code of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia, by making targeted modifications related to downtown sub-districts, uses and use-specific requirements, aerial bulk density building and setback regulations, off-street and bicycle parking, driveways, resilient building features, and landscaping, screening, lighting, and signage regulations, together with certain technical amendments to comply with the Virginia Code and improve administrative efficiency."
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir.
We are in need of a motion and a second?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any additional discussion from our colleagues on council on this item?
You have speakers.
We do have a couple of speakers on this item, and our first speaker is Joanne Clark.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and staff. This item could be a little arbitrary. It says, "These code amendments are only for the downtown district," even though it has the big old caps that say "Citywide." When you make these amendments to dovetail into the innovative district where they're targeted, it could be construed later down the road that other people would wonder why we can do these intense densities, but we can't do them in other parts of the city. So I have some suggestions for you. Either consider Churchland an overlay district, that only special things can happen in that specific overlay district, so that these amendments and code changes do not apply, as well as other parts of the city, or make this specific to the innovative district and downtown areas as an overlay, and only make them pertinent to those areas in that overlay. Otherwise, there may be some lawsuits down the road. This could be a big problem. I have concerns about the density, and the fact that this 13-point-something million-dollar gift in a grant is never gonna be able to pay for all the things that will have to be developed in infrastructure for 4,000 citizens, possibly 4,000 citizens. And when the little page on schools came up, there is no way in the world, because no one from schools has determined how many children can be generated from this proposed density, that this can even be passed. This will affect schools. It'll affect everything: libraries, schools, roads, water, sewer, police department, and all of that. The work's been done to a certain degree, but there's more work to do. But at least don't make the whole city pay for taxes that come out of this for infrastructure. I think it's time to go back to the thinking box. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Mr. Mark Godalde Kucowski. Sir, if you come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council, and other neighbors. In listening to the presentation this evening, I could understand and appreciate the points about density and the potential benefits to the city from being able to increase density, particularly in what is going to be part of the urban core of the city. A corresponding concern that I hope is being, is going to be considered if this is adopted, is what impact that sort of dense development will have on our emergency evacuation plans in the event of a tropical cyclone paying a visit to the area. One of the characteristics of our major urban centers is that you don't necessarily have one vehicle per person in urban areas. And so if we are relying more on public transit and shared rides in this part of the city, then we definitely need to think about how to get people out when we're faced with an emergency. One of the disconcerting aspects of global climate change is that more intense storms and more frequent storms are part of the scenario going forward. I have seen a couple of storms in the last few years just pop up. It's not the scenario that we're used to, where something develops in the Gulf or the more southerly part of the country around Florida, and moves over the course of several days up. There have been a couple of storms that have shown up off the Outer Banks, and so the timeframes for evacuation are shorter there, coupled with more intensity, and we have major problems just in the current scenario within our region. But if we're going to increase density, the urgency of having appropriate plans in place for evacuation becomes more necessary. So I hope that in conjunction with this, I think that we could benefit from the increases in density that are specified in this proposal, but we just need to make sure that our emergency plans are updated accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there any additional discussion amongst my colleagues on council? Councilman Whitaker, Dr. Whitaker?
Yes, ma'am, I just wanna let citizens know, I'm gonna be voting no on this, and it's because of the issue I raised earlier during the public work session relating to density and the impact on the schools, and since it's not disaggregated here, I'll have to vote no on the whole thing.
Thank you, sir. Are there any additional comments from my colleagues? I would then ask everyone to cast your vote electronically.
The item is adopted five-one.
Thank you, ma'am. We are now moving to the City Managers' Report. Items on the agenda, item 23-177. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering on this item?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting 50... Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting fifty cents of Community Development Block Grant Program income and twenty-nine thousand eight hundred ninety-five dollars of Home Investment Partnerships Program income and appropriating said amount in the FY twenty-twenty-three Community Planning and Development Program Fund.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Second.
Any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, I would ask that my colleagues vote electronically.
This item is adopted six zero.
Thank you, ma'am. Item twenty-three dash one seven eight. Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance that we are considering for this item?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting class-action settlement funds in the amount of twenty-two thousand four hundred fourteen dollars and three cent from the City of Long Beach ETL versus Monsanto Company, class-action PCB litigation and one appropriating said amount in the FY twenty-twenty-three Stormwater Fund Budget and two transferring said amount to the VSMP Permit Compliance Project in the FY twenty-twenty-three Capital Improvement Fund Budget.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Any additional discussion amongst my colleagues? Seeing none, would you please vote electronically?
This item is adopted six zero.
Item twenty-three dash one seven nine. Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering pertaining to this item?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting grant funding in the amount of five million three hundred seventy thousand three hundred fifty-two dollars and appropriating said amount in the FY twenty-twenty-three Portsmouth Public Schools Grant Fund Budget.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Is there any discussion, additional discussion amongst my colleagues on council? If not, please vote electronically.
Please vote again. This item is adopted six zero.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next item, item twenty-three dash one eight zero. Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering pertaining to this item?
Yes, sir. An ordinance, one, accepting flood mitigation assistance grant funding in the amount of two hundred twenty-five thousand dollars from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management and appropriating said amount in the FY twenty-twenty-three Grants Fund and two transferring seventy-five thousand dollars from the FY twenty-twenty-three Stormwater Fund Budget to the Drainage and Street Improvements category of the FY twenty-twenty-three Capital Improvements Fund Budget and then to the FY twenty-twenty-three Grants Fund Budget to serve as the required local match.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Second.
Is there any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted six zero.
Item twenty-three dash one eight one. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance that we are considering pertaining to this item?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting developmental disability residential support funds in the amount of nine thousand two hundred forty dollars from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services and appropriating said amount in the FY twenty-twenty-three Behavioral Healthcare Service Fund Budget to provide support for individuals diagnosed with intellectual development disabilities.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Is there any additional comments or discussion on this item? Seeing none, would you please vote electronically?
This item is adopted six zero.
Item twenty-three dash one eight two. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering pertaining to this item?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting transitional housing program services funding in the amount of three hundred eighty-nine thousand three hundred twenty-seven dollars and forty-seven cents from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services and appropriating said amount in the FY twenty-twenty-three Behavioral Healthcare Services Fund Budget for use by BHS to provide transitional services for individuals with severe mental illness and substance use or other disorders.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted six zero.
And Madam Clerk, would you please read the, well, item twenty-three dash one eighty-three. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance that we are considering pertaining to this item?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting with appreciation a donation in the amount of one hundred dollars from National Drifters Incorporated and appropriating said amount to the FY twenty-twenty-three Social Services Fund Budget for use by the Department of Social Services for the food pantry.
Thank you, ma'am. We are in need of a motion and a second.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Is there any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted six zero.
Madam Clerk. Item twenty-three dash one eight four. Would you please read the ordinance we are considering pertaining to this item?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting funding in the amount of twelve thousand five hundred dollars from the Virginia Department of Social Services and appropriating said amount in the FY twenty-twenty-three Social Services Fund Budget for the use by the Portsmouth Department of Social Services to address issues related to high-acidity children and foster care.
Thank you, ma'am. We are in need of a motion and a second.
Move to adoption.
Second.
Is there any additional discussion amongst my colleagues on council? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted six zero.
Item twenty-three dash one eight five. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering pertaining to this item?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting overtime funding in the amount of two hundred twenty-three thousand twenty-five dollars from the Virginia Department of Social Services and appropriating said amount in the FY twenty-twenty-three Social Services Fund Budget for the processing of Medicaid and childcare cases.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Is there any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted six zero.
Item twenty-three dash one eight six. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the resolution we are considering pertaining to this item?
Yes, sir. A resolution authorizing the City Manager to approve a change order totaling more than twenty-five percent of the contract price of the construction contract with Conrad Brothers, Inc. for exterior renovations and HVAC improvements to the Elm Avenue neighborhood facility.
And we do, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move adoption.
Second.
And we do have a couple of my colleagues who wish to make some comments on this. So Councilman Hugo, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So a question to the City Manager. We have two other CIP projects that are running behind schedule. And in my world, time is money. So I wonder if you can give us an update as a follow-up on how we're doing on the Churchland Bridge and the Court Street construction project, both of those. I'm concerned we may be incurring cost and, and cost overruns.
Would you like that information as a report back?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And if you don't mind, Council, Dr. Whitaker asked, how much was that twenty-five? What percentage or what dollar amount did the twenty-five percent represent? It represented a hundred and thirty-six thousand. The order was five hundred and forty-four thousand. Twenty-five percent of that is a hundred and thirty-six thousand.
And Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Yes, Mr. Terry. So this was a competitive bid. This project. So how does that, how does that work then if a company now bids on a project? I don't know if they were the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, and then they come in with a twenty-five percent change order?
I'll yield to the engineer, but most of the time for procurement, when it comes, when they usually come in for a change order, it's usually because once they got in there and started doing the work, they found that some additional damage was done or some additional things were needed. So they usually come back and say, well, we didn't anticipate those costs because just like anything else, you start repairing the air conditioning and then you find out that your whole system and pipes, not pipes for air conditioning, but your whole system needs to be repaired or replaced. So normally in a change order, that is usually what happens and what, why this cost of twenty-five percent was an adjustment for a change order, but it's something else. Oh, let me read. Yeah, additional repairs would be necessary to address the issues uncovered by the roof demolition. Since the original contract price was one point three million, the addition of repairs will increase the price by approximately forty percent. Under section twelve dash one eighty-three of the city code, council approved approval is required for change orders that increase the contract price by over twenty-five percent or fifty thousand dollars, whichever is greater.
Right. Yeah, I'm not questioning whether it has to be approved by council. I understand that. My question goes to the fact that if you have companies and they're competitively bidding and then they come in with a twenty-five percent change order on something that I guess they were saying was an extenuating circumstance or something they didn't previously know existed. I just, it seems like there's some inequity there that someone could underbid like that and then said it was an extenuating circumstance. And I don't know if the other contractors recognized that issue and had it in their contract or not, but it just seems that that's inequity. That's a pretty large change order. Is that, is that common that you all are, well, I guess it's not because we haven't had it covered for council? So that's a, that's a pretty big increase there.
So what I'll ask the, the James right to address is what was actually, if he has the information of what was actually uncovered during the repair?
Yeah, so as they started to, to work through the site and do the demolition, you wouldn't have seen this during your normal bidding process. You, what was discovered was after they started doing their demolition. So after they removed the roof and get some other things for tie-ins, they discovered additional water damage behind the walls, some environmental concerns. And also, because it is an older facility, there were previous repairs that were done that were failing. And so it, as they continued to demolish and to try to fix things, they discovered more and more things were wrong. And so can't leave them in that condition and leave the facility just open for that amount of time. So as they continue to work to try to bundle things up and get things back in order, that was the reason for the change order.
And, Mr. Terry, you're going to follow with the minority participation in this particular contract?
Absolutely.
Are there any additional comments from my colleagues on council or questions? Seeing none, I would ask, we do have a motion and a second. So I would ask that everyone vote electronically.
This item is adopted five one.
Our next item, item twenty-three dash one eight seven. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the resolution we are considering pertaining to this item?
Yes, sir. Resolution authorizing the grant of a variable with utility easement to Virginia Electric and Power Company across the portion of tax parcel zero five eight seven through zero zero one oh at Manor High School.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Is there any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, I would ask that my colleagues vote electronically.
This item is adopted six zero.
That concludes our City Manager's items. We've now come to new business, item twenty-three dash one eight eight, Boards and Commissions. And Mr. Moody, Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. We're going to do these in two separate motions. I move that the following reappointments. I prefer to do it two for clarity. Thank you. As I was saying, I move that the following reappointments be approved. Clean Community Commission, Kimberly Blunt. Herbie Desmas. Community Criminal Justice Board, Dr. Rosalyn Sanderlin. History Commission, Lee Boardman. Gracie Bowers. Parks and Recreation Commission, Laurel Armstrong. Joe Harmon. Park and Authority, Catherine Shore. Social Services Advisory Commission, Ashley Allen. Wetlands Board, Richard Calvert.
We have, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
I would ask my colleagues to please vote electronically.
This portion is adopted six zero.
Thank you. Mayor, members of the council, I move that the following appointments be approved. Behavioral Healthcare Services Advisory Board, Linda Cheek, Darlene Washington, Celeste Pugh, Alberto Musto, Dakota Anderson. Clean Community Commission, Valerie Parker. Downtown Design Committee, Christine Babcock, Kenneth Rogers, Jasmine Young. Museum and Fine Arts Commission, Regina McCoy and Heidi Pelan-Brooks. Parks and Recreation Commission, Sharon Anderson. Dr. Juliet Boykins, Bryant Thomas. Portsmouth Park and Authority, Herbie Damas. Portsmouth Port Industrial Commission, Peter Hanson. Social Services Advisory Commission, Tammy Spears. Tabora Community College, Hope Sinclair. Wetlands Board, Marcus Devilla Benny, Leon Greggs.
So we have a motion. We are in need of a second.
Second.
And I would ask my colleagues to vote electronically.
This item is adopted six zero.
Thank you, Councilman Moody. Our next item is item twenty-three dash one eight nine, items submitted by council members. Vice Mayor Lucas Burke.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to remind everybody, if you haven't seen this little flyer here, we're approaching Yemoja Festival Weekend, and we will be there. Hope to see you there Friday, May twenty-sixth is the opening. Uh, Friday, May twenty-sixth is the opening at five-thirty. Um, Tide Water Drive Band will be performing, and these are free concerts at six-fifteen. Um, Dee Polite and her phenomenal, phenomenal Sounds Band will be playing at eight o'clock, and then closing out Friday night will be Second Wind. On Saturday, um, there will be a heritage tour, which will begin at two. Um, Fuzz Band at two to three. They will have children's activities, um, some other activities. Better By Tuesday at four-thirty. Raw Jazz, one of our favorites, at five-forty-five. And the Feature on Saturday night at eight o'clock, Boys to Men. If you haven't gotten your tickets, there are still tickets available. And closing out on Sunday, um, children's activities at two, and some, some, actually gospel, New Sisters in Christ at two. Uh, Ricky White and the Deliverance Camp, um, will be at four, and the Tide Water Virginia Chapter of the GMWA Choir on Sunday. And we also, um, have our Memorial Day Parade, but which someone else will present on.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And our next speaker will be Dr. Whitaker.
Uh, yes, this is for, uh, city manager. Um, the update on the school board requests for the, uh, weapons detection system. There was an email that was sent to us, um, from a May eighteenth letter from the superintendent speaking to the, uh, four-point-seven million requests. And if we could get a follow-up on that. Also, uh, update, um, the council received quite a bit of, uh, information regarding the sheriff's duties to the city. Just trying to make sure we're clear. I'm not clear where we are, uh, with that last conversation. We could get an update, uh, on that as well. And, uh, to our city attorney, uh, the historical context that I mentioned regarding, uh, Sugar Hill, uh, we hope that that would be something that, um, you are able to get Dr. Cassandra Nubi Alexander to hopefully speak before council on that context, instead of just a written report. And also, you had mentioned previously regarding the Sugar Hill property, that, um, that was all transferred, um, from the, uh, city, that the city was involved in that. Um, the three-twenty Quibbet Street property that raised the concern, uh, when you go back and look at that information we received on that, uh, you will note that, uh, it is GPDC, uh, the Greater Portsmouth Development Corporation that has ownership in that. And so, that raises a question as to, um, what was a private entity doing, involved with, um, the transfer there with the city, uh, with the Sugar Hill property. And those are, um, those are all my issues for right now.
And I can provide that last question and a report back to you?
Uh, yes, yes, because you, you stated was just city, that it was only the city involved, but GP, according to that handout, GPDC was also involved.
I can develop that more for you, and I'll get that back to the full council. Thank you.
Councilman Hugo.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So, the Vice Mayor gave a great rundown on all of the stuff happening in Portsmouth this coming long weekend. Uh, I want to tie it up with, uh, a reminder that this is Memorial Day Weekend. Memorial Day is traditionally the weekend that we honor the veterans who gave their last full measure in defending our freedom. And so, we will celebrate with a parade on Monday. It's the one-hundred-and-thirty-ninth consecutive year for the Portsmouth Memorial Day Parade, so I hope to see, uh, folks come out. We'll have the Fleet Forces Band and the, uh, Tradoc Band, uh, anchoring the parade and, uh, and sixty or so units, so should be a nice, a, a nice affair. Hopefully, this, uh, weather that's coming up the coast will bypass us so we can, we can enjoy the parade. But, uh, please, I encourage you to spend a few minutes thinking about the, the Gold Star families, uh, this, uh, this coming weekend, who are celebrating Memorial Day without their loved one who, who, uh, served us so well. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Tillage, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, this past weekend, the two-hundred-plus men hosted their annual Two-Hundred-Plus-Men Scholars Breakfast, where young men from all across the Hepner Rhodes region were honored for their academic excellence. Um, and Portsmouth Public Schools had quite a few students who were honored and received scholarships, uh, from IC Norcom High School, Churchland High School, as well as Manor High School. And so, a lot of times, those types of stories do not get told. Uh, but Portsmouth, we are producing excellent students in our school division, who have the, um, opportunity and the hope in trying to provide them the resources to be able to achieve their dreams, um, of going through college. So, I just wanted to take the time to, um, pay recognition and honor those students for this, for their great success.
Thank you, sir. Also, I would like to take a moment to congratulate our Vice Mayor, Lisa Lucas Burke, on being chosen as the Chairperson of Virginia First Cities. It's a huge responsibility, um, and many times, uh, we engage not only at the local level, but at the state and national level. And we provide input and also bring back ideas that will improve our body, certainly on council, provide information. So, on behalf of my colleagues on council, I want to recognize our Vice Mayor for her service to the state and our community. Thank you, ma'am. Would you like to speak a little bit about Virginia First Cities?
Yeah, I would, I would. Um, Virginia First Cities is, is sixteen cities, um, that are, um, usually landlocked or don't get the opportunity to develop their land because of, um, situations, they're landlocked, um, they can't expand. And Portsmouth is one of those cities. Uh, we do pay to belong to this organization, but it is very good information. Uh, we have lobbyists who lobby our legislators at the Virginia Assembly to make sure that we're one of the cities that get our fair share of any funds, uh, that are being allocated across the region. And in this position, I'm, I'm Chair-elect until July first, um, and my Vice Chair will be Tina Vick from Newport News. So, we do work together to ensure that our cities are represented and that we receive our fair share of brownfields and, um, the HB five-nine-nine funding for, uh, our public safety, um, officers and anything else, our K-12, um, schools fundings, um, they, they look at all of that. Uh, we have a very good budget, uh, person, Jim Regimball, who gives us all of the details about, um, the state budget and where the money is and where we should be going after it. So, I'm honored to be, um, in this position to serve, and I will represent you well. So, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And last, as Councilman Tillage had indicated, you know, the support of the committee of two-hundred-plus men is critically important to the success of our young people. And as a member of the committee of two-hundred-plus men, I want to thank Rivers Casino Portsmouth for their contribution to the banquet. And those funds, as you may all know, go towards scholarships and providing services to our young men in the community. So, we are Portsmouth proud of their achievements, and we are Portsmouth proud of our corporate citizens who step up and support our organizations. Thank you. Any other items submitted by council? Seeing none, then we'll move toward pending items. Um, Madam City Manager, are there any pending items to report on?
No, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. We are now moving to item twenty-three dash one-nine-one, non-agenda speakers. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the speaker's statement?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, city council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice the timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. All remarks shall be directed to the city council as a body, rather than to any particular member of city council, staff, or the audience, and should be limited to matters that only the Portsmouth City Council can influence. Speakers who have failed to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And our first speaker tonight is Joe Hunter. Ms. Hunter, ma'am, if you would come forward and state your name and address, you will have five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Joe Hunter, and I live at eight-hundred Crawford Street. On December thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one, my bike was stolen. It was securely locked onto the bike rack of the building I live in. This bike did not come from Walmart. It was not sold at Walmart, so a police report was filed. My bike was not recovered until June fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three, twenty-two, I apologize. On that day, at around eleven, eleven o'clock AM, I was out walking, and someone riding their bike that looked like my bike caught my eye. The person rode the bike to the probation and parole office. I walked over to the probation and parole office and waited for that person to ask about the bike. He said he did not know anything about the bike, because he had gotten it from someone else. I asked if he could read the serial number on the bottom of the bike to me, as I had that serial number in my phone. He flipped the bike over, read the number to me, and it was my stolen bike. I told him a police report had been made, and I asked him for my bike back. At first, he started to walk away from the bike, but when I went to take the bike, he changed his mind and came for the bike. Uh, he proceeded to curse, curse at me and, uh, attempted to ride off with the bike. I said to him, "That's okay, let's see what your probation officer has to say about this." He stopped in his tracks. He got off the bike and threw it at me and walked away. I called nine-one-one two times for help. I was afraid this person would return and hurt me further. Nine-one-one did not respond. A gentleman that worked in the probation and parole office asked if I was okay and offered me a bottle of water. He told me, uh, nine-one-one probably would not come, because when they call police, they usually do not show up in a timely manner. He suggested that the police department was just across the street to walk there and make a police report, and that's what I did with my destroyed bike in tow. Officer Brumfield met me outside of the building, took my information, took pictures of my injuries with his phone, and even watched what was left of my bike while I walked back home to get my car to take my bike home. That was the first and the last time I have seen or heard from Officer Brumfield. He has not followed up with me at all. I have called Portsmouth Police Department many times and left many messages in the last ten to eleven months for Officer Brumfield, but to no avail. I have named dates and times of these attempts. I have even reached out to the Commonwealth Attorney's Office with no returned phone call there either. I have given, I have been given the runaround in the worst way, and I am extremely frustrated and disappointed. Is assault and battery now acceptable in the city of Portsmouth? The person that stole my bike in two thousand twenty-one, then, six months later assaulted me with it, is on probation. I want justice for what happened to me. I want to know why, as a taxpaying citizen of this city, the police department has failed me.
Thank you, ma'am. I, I think what, I... Where's the chief? Chief, did you want to come forward and? Okay. So, the chief of police is here, ma'am, and he is more than willing to address your concerns. Thank you. Our next speaker is Mr. Ron Sauer.
Hey, Ron Sauer, Mary Fields area, Portsmouth. I hope you enjoy what's coming around. I'd like to get straight to the point. I talk about boots-on-the-ground volunteers for cities. I've been east, west, north, south, Midwest, everything. Larger cities tend to do away with volunteers, boots on the ground. You have them in commissions, you have them in boards, you have them in all sorts of stuff behind the desk, but you don't have them on the ground. And perhaps maybe something could have been avoided with what we just went through. In my years, and I'm pushing eighty, by the way, I'm just about there. So, I've seen a lot of stuff, I've been through a lot of things, I've been in a lot of emergency management and other areas of cities. The first thing that really happens is city councils, city employees start losing out-of-the-box thinking. And things come about, questions come up, and something that could be solved from out-of-box just right away, in a simple way, nine times out of ten with volunteers, nobody ever thinks about it. It's got to be done formal, formal, right? The "we don't need volunteers, we can do it all" attitude is really prevalent. The other thing is, being a new, fairly new resident here, I hear this all the time. Residents rarely have kind words for the city. I don't hear people really talking kind words for the city. A lot of times, I get, "Good luck with the city, they ain't gonna listen to you, they ain't gonna help, and you're lucky if you even get in the door." And I, I think there are a lot of people out here that are probably sitting back there right now and going, "Whoa." A simple effect, or a simple thing that you can do, it's a short list, I'm gonna hang around afterwards, if anybody wants to talk to me and, and add me. I've been a volunteer almost sixty years in emergency management, cities, all sorts of stuff, so I've got a lot of background. But, the one thing, boots-on-the-ground volunteers, these are people who are actually doing things, actually doing things, not sitting behind a desk on a commission, but actually doing things. They develop a vested interest in the city, and they talk positive. They talk positive. You have everything from, well, things in emergency management, you have some police, I'm sure your auxiliary police officers don't downgrade the city. I'm sure the auxiliary police officers are the ones who probably talk more good about the city than everybody else. They help get things done, and a lot of times, people think they're taking away jobs or whatever, but they don't. They actually make things a little bit easier for employees, and they help get things done that can't be get done because of stress in spending and whatever. But the biggest thing, the biggest thing they bring to city government is they bring back out-of-box thinking to get things done, regardless whether you like that idea or not or whatever, and I'm sure, anyway. I have been told I should not come up here, and I should not say this, I should not do this, I'm gonna be in trouble. People all over the place have told me that. I don't believe it. That's not what I believe, it's not what I've found, but we got to change the attitude somewhere along the line here. And I'm gonna say, spend a penny and get back a dollar in return. And I'm going to say, spend a penny and get back a dollar in return.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Moody, Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Sauer, thanks for being here tonight, and those people who told you, warned you not to come here, they're wrong, they're negative. But what I would like to say, we have over 300 volunteers that serve on our boards and commission, and their task, you know, different expertises across the board, they're out-of-box thinkers, but they're also very valuable to the city for that reason. And I would invite you to serve as a volunteer on one of those boards or commissions. The list I read a while ago are new volunteers that just filled out an application and denoted their interests, and there's a listing of what's available on our city's website, or you can also pick up that list from the clerk's office as well. But we'd love to have you volunteer and share your out-of-the-box thinking and expertise with the, with whatever board or commission that you would choose. But thanks for being here. Nobody will beat you up.
I'm on the ground, boots on the ground, I'm not a commission man.
Okay, well, those 300 are boots on the ground as well, but thank you for being here.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Ms. Catherine Howell. Ms. Howell, if you would come forward, state your name and address, you will have five minutes.
Let's get Ms. Britt.
Okay. Thank you very much. Ms. Angela Britt, our next speaker.
We ask you to give us a ear to hear in the Odyssey and direct our paths as we go forth in Jesus' name. Amen. My name is Angela Britt and I reside in the City of Chesapeake. Gun violence, gun violence prevention and intervention framework. The healing process needs to begin here in the city of Portsmouth. The city officials should be reaching out to local families that have been directly affected by gun violence. They should be helping families to move forward through the tragedy of losing a loved one. Counseling services should be offered with licensed mental health providers and other support groups that directly deals with unaddressed trauma. These traumas can lead to mental health crisis within the family dynamics, which can affect mental health emotionally, intellectually, and social ability to move forward with recovery and healing process and overall well-being of the family structure, again, unaddressed trauma. But first, there must be acknowledgement that there is a gun violence problem here in the city of Portsmouth. Your neighboring governors, officials, other mayors in the city of Hampton, Richmond, and Newport News have acknowledged that they are facing a gun violence crisis and have proclaimed and recognized a National Crime Victim Week, and are moving forward by addressing gun violence crisis in their cities, providing services and support for families who have been directed, affected by gun violence. Again, gun violence prevention and intervention framework. So city council, there must be an acknowledgement that we do have a problem here in the city of Portsmouth, and recognize that the victims' families need help and support. They do need the help and support. I'm not talking about the 12 nonprofit organizations here in the city of Portsmouth. I'm talking about mental health providers for these families who have been affected by this unaddressed trauma. Again, nothing is going to be done until we first admit that there is a gun violence problem here in the city of Portsmouth. City council members, we just need your support and to address a lot of these unaddressed trauma that has been affecting the city of Portsmouth. I was given this Department of Behavioral Health Services brochure when I came in today, and I was told that Dr. Whittaker was here at 5:00. Had I known that, I would have came here. I look at this presentation that he presented, and again, it's not addressing the problem, the unaddressed trauma within the city of Portsmouth and the families who have been affected by gun violence, right here. So we need to first recognize and realize and proclaim that there is a problem, and then we need to set up a framework and how we're going to address this, not by this behavioral, Department of Behavior. This is a great printout, it's awesome, a PowerPoint, but it's not addressing the real issue, and that's unaddressed trauma. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Yes, Ms. Britt. Thank you for giving your steadfastness in keeping the issue alive. At the presentation today, Dr. Whittaker did address some of the concerns that I think you have raised and as well as others in the community, and one of the issues he mentioned was how he's looking to move behavioral healthcare services more into community-based organizations, which is needed, recognizing that it's not enough to just be at the central location, that it needs to branch out, and I believe there's a sincere commitment to making that happen, and you're right, it's much needed because not only are the present trauma, but centuries of trauma that have gone unaddressed, so you're on the right track.
Thank you, doctor.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Joseph Tiar. Mr. Tiar, if you would come forward, state your name and address, you will have five minutes.
Good evening, sir. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, Dr. Whitaker, Vice Mayor and Councilman Hugo Tillage, and also City Attorney and our Clerk. Good evening to each and every one of you. I come here this evening for something that we feel in the public safety within the Fire Department that is very important, is critical. And what that relates to particularly is our city manager, our leadership at that level. And I just want to let everyone here know that on behalf of the men and women who served day in and day out in the Fire Department, the Police Department, the Sheriff's Department, we fully support our interim city manager, Ms. Terry. I have known her for over 30 years. Worked for this city almost 23 years, but I know her before that, and my family, my grandparents, they knew her father and her family. And I say that to say, we need that type of support and continued leadership. We're growing, we're moving forward, and in a positive direction, and so we want to keep that momentum going. In order for us to keep that momentum going, we must keep her on board. We must appoint her full-time to that position. We give her the opportunity, we've got a lot of work to do within the city, and she's the right person for the job. We need that support, not only in words, but in actions. She supports us fully, day in and day out on the Fire Department. I got a, it's a list of things that, I know she's working on things that she has done, her and her team, on behalf of the Fire Department, and just putting the money where the mouth is. And so we fully support that, and also everybody here, I know each and every one of you here. I wouldn't come before you to waste your time. This is something that's very important to us in public safety. Strong leadership, dedication, commitment, love, a heart for the people. We're not just saying that, we see that. A lot of times, when we're on scene, she's on scene. With the police chief too, the Police Department, a lot of different things going on throughout the city, she's right there. Sometimes it's late in the evening, and she just left from here, 7, 8, 9 o'clock at night. So I'm just, I strongly encourage each and every one of you to appoint her to that position so that we can continue to move the city forward in the right direction. If anybody has any questions for me, I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor, sir.
Yes, Ms. Tiar, I'm not surprised at your comments. I think Ms. Terry has always shown a commitment to equity. I think that's why you're up here, speaking on that regard. But I would like to share with the citizens of Portsmouth that are here and that will be listening, is that Mr. Tiar, who is standing before us, represents a major historical move in our city. On this Thursday, after 271 years, Portsmouth chartered, what, in 1752? After 271 years, Mr. Tiar will become the first African-American appointed to the position of Fire Battalion Chief. He's standing here, though, on the shoulders of those who came before him, who were qualified, but because of racism, they were overlooked. Joseph Grandison passed the test and was qualified to be a battalion chief, but he was overlooked. My classmates follow Billy Thompson, Sr., first captain. And so you're standing on some shoulders, and I want you to know that what you represent is someone who has persevered, considering that this city in, what, 2009, I believe, was under consent decree from the Department of Justice.
Yes, sir, 2012, yes, sir.
Yeah, because of its hiring practices, like so many other jurisdictions around the country, requiring a written test that was unnecessary to perform as a firefighter. And so you represent a great deal of struggle, and I hope you will appreciate that historical context out of which you come. I share that because there's this cliche that's going on around that's saying, Portsmouth, we're winning. And I think that we need to seriously ask, who is the "we," and by whom is winning defined? And so I think when we look at how others have been marginalized, and you stand here today, I just want to commend you and let you know that what you represent is significant.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank all of you. Thank you for your time, that's all that I have. Good evening.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Cedric Crado.
I live at 725 Bow Street. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, City Manager, and Portsmouth citizens. What you're getting is a list, a list before you, degrees like a high school, college, or military graduation, but it's not. It's a list of 120 victims of gun violence that has occurred in the city of Portsmouth. This list is a reminder to the people elected, to serve the people, to remember that these lives still matter, along with the families. Many of the victims on this list are unsolved homicides. Many of these families have never been notified of their status of many of their cases. Many of these families have never heard of any of your city grassroots organizations providing any assistance with issues especially regarding to counseling or mental health. I'm asking the citizens to really take a look at the people that they are elected or voting for, and understand that families were not, our families of Portsmouth who've been affected by gun violence are not being serviced, nor given the attention that is needed to heal from a list of various lists of loved ones in this city. There are not, there are no, I mean, no information being distributed to any family members that I have come in contact with. And if, and if, and if you look at this list I presented to all of the council members and the city manager, we actually have a flyer. Your grassroots organizations don't have flyers. They don't have, families can't reach out because there's no flyers, there's no contact information, and I don't know why that is, you know what I'm saying? I think that we need to address what a grassroots organization is, and it shouldn't be based on a political party or a, or being in certain types of groups or being familiar with certain city council people. See, there's a problem in Portsmouth, and again, Dr. Whitaker's always hitting on it, it just, you know, you may not want to believe it, but there's, there's a lot of issues that have already been, that have been in Portsmouth, we just are afraid to address. And until we address them, we can use these smoke and mirrors and act like these problems don't exist, but they're going to continue to exist. When you aren't the mayor, when you aren't the city council person, when you aren't the city manager, and aren't the city attorney, or city police chief, when you guys are going on, these problems will still persist if they're not addressed, no matter what you try to, or people try to make it out to be. I spoke with Mr. Moody a while ago when he was running for mayor, and we talked about trying to get a memorial, something memorial for the families, because we have 120, and this is not all of them. The extra deaths that are on this, people that died on this list, they're from other cities that we're actually working with, and we all, we work with other cities, we just don't, we don't, we don't put it out there, we don't talk about it, we're actually doing some work. And again, I say this, we talk a lot up here, but what are the, what are the actions? What are we doing? I don't know about the 400 cameras we supposed to have been getting, I haven't heard anything about FUSIS, I know it's isn't working, but I've been doing this, I've been coming down here since 2021, and it seems like the same attitude, the same behaviors that's occurring. And it's, and it's not fair, especially to a family, and I'm going to give you a story, and I'm not going to mention all, I'm not going to say all these 125 names, but it's going to take up too much time, but I'm going to give you a story about when I was in Wawa this past Friday, and a family came up to me and said, "Hey, my nephew died, and I hadn't seen you on the, on the, at the council, and I didn't know how to reach you, but a friend gave me your information." So I gave him my card, and I told him he can call me, and maybe I can reach out to the, you know, Commonwealth Fraternal or somebody at the city. But he was like, "No," because they, people got the same notion that nothing can be done. That's the, that's the mentality that's going on around in Portsmouth. People really feel like that Portsmouth, nothing can be done, no matter what we're preaching about, we're winning, we're not winning. And the people that are suffering are the people that, can I finish, ma'am?
Finish your thoughts, sir.
Thank you, appreciate it, ma'am. People that have been affected by this gun violence, again, please look at this list, please, because again, I know I was excited when I graduated college and, and high school, and you know, you get that pamphlet, and you could, you know, you hold it forever. These pamphlets, the families are, these family members are stuck here forever. There's no change. And again, I thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Mr. Our next speaker is Mr. Leon Hammonds.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening, Mr. Hammonds.
Vice Mayor, City Council.
Could you please speak into the mic a little bit? Thank you, sir. We want to make sure we hear you.
Okay. My name is Leon Hammonds, under Bowie Court. Uh, I'm not gonna say that this is a taxation without representation, but the tax increase and fees increase, we need to do a little better on, uh, our services. We're not picking up the grass, we're not sweeping the streets. And that's part of the flood problem. The storm water, it will help the storm water. Now, my grass has been sitting out on the curb for over a week. Some people say, well, you're supposed to call. No, I'm not supposed to call, because I don't call to be billed. And, uh, it just doesn't make any sense, though, because it takes about two weeks sometime, every other week, now they're picking up the, the grass and leaves. But besides that, I've been thinking about the situation about, everybody's talking about the gun violence. They may say, uh, I'm wrong, but it starts at home. If you don't know what your child is doing in the room, you can't go in the room because it's his room. If he's paying rent, it is his room. If he's not paying rent, it's not his room. If you don't know who he's associated with, that's a problem right there. When I came up, it was no problem about that. My parents knew exactly who I was associating with. Everybody knew who the, the child was associating with. And these parents know who has guns by their own, by their, uh, child. And it doesn't make any sense. And your child don't need to be out past eleven o'clock. It don't really need to be out past nine o'clock. Now, if you're an innocent bystander, now that's a different situation, but you don't need to be out. And one thing about it, though, is a lot of these people need to go into service. But the problem is, they can't pass the test. See, if you could pass the test, you could go into service. They rather stay on the corner. And the policeman needs to move them off the corner, gradually move them off the corner, regardless of whether they say about, uh, uh, just closing up the corner, but that's the way it is. But the city council can't do everything. The parents got to do something. The kids are running away from home now. I, I look on, uh, 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 the television now, and next thing you know, you see this child, he's running away from home. Why is he running away from home? See, now, that child has a problem, they need to find out. One thing about it, I ain't think about running away from home. Because who gonna feed you? That's regular. See, so really, the parents need to get together on the whole situation now. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hammonds. Our next speaker is Mr. Mark Godolke Jutrowski. State your name and address, sir, and you will have five minutes.
Mayor, Council, and other neighbors, uh, before I get into the main part of my remarks, I think it's appropriate to report back to the mayor that his, uh, designated representative at the regional meetings last week represented him and the city of Portsmouth extremely well. So while you were practicing international diplomacy, you had somebody on the ground taking care of our business who was capable. And she even had extended some invitations within the region to our Umosia Festival, so she did some additional promotion for us. And that would be the Vice Mayor, of course, I didn't mention your name.
Thank you, sir, for that, that wonderful, uh, response.
So I have been listening over the course of several months to, uh, the discussion about the Sugar Hill neighborhood in Portsmouth and the issue of inequity in terms of the treatment of the residents. My question is, why Sugar Hill in particular when we have more history of displacement here, including the displacement of the people of Lincolnville, uh, the displacement of people in trucks them, the displacement of people along the Western Freeway? We've had a lot of displacement, not just in Portsmouth, not just in Virginia, but in the U.S. And usually, it's the people on the lower rungs of the economic ladder who are displacement, are displaced by projects that are nominally for the benefit of everybody except them. So I think if we're going to talk about one particular neighborhood, we should look at the big picture. We should look at the historical evidence. And we should devise a way of trying to make amends for the injustices of the past. Now, again, this is a national problem, it's actually an international problem in, in many ways, but there's always something you can do in your own community to try to undo what has been done wrong in the past. But we need to put our best minds together to look at what has been done and what can be done. To me, the greatest thing that, that we can do is ensure that we have a solid educational system in Portsmouth. And this council has been taking great strides in that direction. What with full funding of the school board's requests, uh, digging into our local funds to make sure that the needs of the system are met. But there are other things we can do. And I would like to see, you know, a truth and reconciliation commission, if you will, put together, drawing from across the community to try to address other inequities here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor.
Mr. Godolke Jutrowski, if you would, if you would, come back to the podium. You, you asked a question, uh, as to why Sugar Hill. And Sugar Hill was initially, uh, targeted because of a transaction that came before council where some property was being transferred back to the city, which triggered it. It's not that there was no knowledge of previous communities being impacted by this. It's just that, um, when that particular transaction occurred, it raised an issue. Since then, I have gotten calls and have talked to a number of African-Americans who have told me that the same thing happened to their families and in their communities, right here in Portsmouth, where their property was taken by the city, which I already knew. It's historical, as you said, it's, it's international. Um, the issue becomes, what do we do about it? And it's interesting that, um, the silence that the community that is supposed to be concerning, it's interesting, the silence that you hear, um, when we see generational wealth has been stolen. And so, uh, I agree, there does need to be some addressing of it. The issue becomes, uh, do we have the more courage to, to address it? Uh, just like Chief, I think it's Man Ubat, the Chief of the Fire Department, that's more courage what he did in promoting Mr. Tiat as he should have. So will we address the inequities that we see around us? And so, um, I, I appreciate your comment. Uh, however, uh, I would like to see if this community is going to be as outraged over the injustice as some of us are.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Dr. William Dotson. Sir, please come forward, state your name and address, and you will have five minutes.
William Dotson, Park Manor. In the report on pending items tonight, there was no items presented. But we in the past have, the board has asked for updates on items that we're not hearing about. So I wanted to heighten our awareness that we're falling into the patterns that the last council did, and that is that items we are asking for updates for, I'm, I'm not seeing. And the public would like to see those items, too. The big item that I don't know that we've seen a recent update on is the nine-one-one system. I don't know how we're getting information out on that, but I don't think that we're seeing the progress that y'all had asked for a monthly up, update at a previous meeting. Where are those monthly updates? And can we break this pattern of asking for things and not seeing them? The second thing was, there are times, um, at this meeting where a number of us who are familiar with how meetings are supposed to be run by parliamentary procedure are abhorred by the methodology in this committee. I know all of you are familiar with Robert's Rules of Orders, so I wanted to say, do you have a copy of it? I have a copy for each of you here, so that you can sit down and read them. I've spoken with your parliamentarian, and I please, please, please ask you to sit down with your parliamentarian and talk about some of the problems that we're having in running the meetings here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Hunter Morris.
Good evening, um, Uncle Billy and the mayor and, and everybody else, good, good evening. Honorable Mayor and members of City Council, Portsmouth is a historic port city with lots of attractive sites. Unfortunately, our city attractiveness is being diminished by a few who disrespect our city, tossing the trash upon our streets, traveling around our, traveling around our city. The litter found on our streets, like fast foods, weed food directory, McDonald's, Wendy's, Taco Bell, Wawa, and others, gates away in streets many times. The litter is found in the shadows of no littering. I think, uh, the fine should be lowered to where people can afford it. And then, littering, I suspect it's a very rare event when someone is tossing their trash out their vehicle window. My plea tonight is for people to think twice before tossing their trash on our streets. I mean, we all have responsible, we should all be responsible and put our trash away in the trash can, that's why they have trash cans. I've been, I've been going to work with my dad and, um, in the past few months, I've seen people throwing trash on interstates. I mean, this is getting ridiculous. It's got to stop somehow. And, and, and to throw this off real quick, there are, there are families struggling out there. Are there any programs to help, and there's a lot of homeless people out there. I think there's been more homeless people than I ever seen. I plead tonight that, uh, that Portsmouth takes more responsibility to, to keep our city safe and clean. I call for each one of us to call action. Because if we don't call action, where is our city going to be? I think it's time to step up. And that's my speech for tonight.
Thank you, Hunter. Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Hunter, thanks for reminding us that, yes, that I do a lot of traveling around the city, as do my colleagues. And there are a lot of people that are litter bugs, that, uh, uh, they toss it out of the window instead of keeping it until they arrive to wherever they're going. So it's very costly. There are a lot of bad things that happens with the trash, ends it up, ends up in the storm, storm drains.
Or somebody won't shield, or somebody, uh, somebody could have a car accident because of it.
Yes, a lot of bad things, but it's very costly. It also gives visitors to our city a very bad image. But, uh, all of us can do a better job of, uh, policing what's thrown out on our streets. And hopefully, citizens will refrain from doing that. Nobody, I would like to think, wants to live in a city that, uh, is full of litter. But, uh, thank you for bringing that to our attention, Hunter.
And no problem, I just, I'm just worried about people's safety. And that has a lot to do with everything. I think, I think we should all be safe, regardless of what we are driving down the interstate or what we doing. I, I think, I think it's, I think when people throw trash out the, out their window, I think they need to take full bear, responsible for it. I think that, I, I truly think that, that they need to bear arms for it. They say, hey, I did this, I won't do it again.
Thank you, Hunter. And one of the last things I'd like to share with everyone, you all may be wondering why we all are wearing green ribbons this evening. Well, the green ribbons are representation of Mental, Mental Health Awareness Month, which is this month. So I encourage you all to seek out the services, uh, if you need them, uh, from our Behavioral Health Department, and they are more than willing to assist in any way that they can. If there are not any more, uh, items for us to discuss, then this meeting is adjourned. Enjoy your holiday weekend, and happy Memorial Day.